Forcer.
Here.
President.
Here. President.
President, if you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented, please. We have a motion by Mr. Greenley, a second by Ms. Schroeder, to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion on this item? Mr. Weaver, do you have an item you'd like to change?
Yes, I was wondering to see if we could move the MOU to the top. Looks like it is already there.
Okay. It appears that it's been moved. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. The item is approved. The President reports. Special Presentation, Dr. Seketa.
Uh, Mr. Hartwell, it is Board Recognition Month, and this is our first meeting, regular meeting in the month of March. And I believe you have, we have some guests from Ms. Van Horn's Orchestra Department. Fine musicians here.
It looks like we have Christina Lee, Lily Kate, Ben Field, Thomas Dow, Lydia Crabtree, and Emmett Kerr. Is that correct? Did I correctly say your names? But we're so glad that you're here, and it appears that you're playing a prelude for us this evening. So take it away, please. Thank you so much. Wonderful music this evening. See you next month. In addition to that, I believe we have a resolution, Dr. Seketa, this evening.
Yep.
And then we have an award from Missouri School Boards Association. The resolution states, whereas a system of quality public education is essential to the future of our state and nation, and whereas the people of Missouri have a long tradition of support for public education and their local school districts, and whereas local school boards are the ultimate expression of the unique American institution of representative governance of public school districts, and whereas local school boards, acting on behalf of an enclosed concert with the people of their communities, chart the direction of education in their communities, and whereas school, local school boards serve as the key community advocate for children, youth, and the public schools, now therefore let it be resolved that March 2025 is School Board Recognition Month in Joplin Schools, and we urge all community members to recognize the members of the Joplin Schools Board of Education for their commitment to providing our students with the finest possible education. Thank you to my fellow board members for all of your work in what that looks like. We have another proclamation this evening from Governor Mike Keough. It states, whereas a system of quality public education is essential to our state and nation. Oh, I just read that, sorry. They have two. So we have a written one and then a scanned one. So this was a resolution from Governor Mike Keough. So we thank the state of Missouri for their support of March being School Board Recognition Month, and for everybody here this evening for your efforts as board members. They don't go unnoticed, and it's really a pleasure to serve with everybody in this group. In addition to that, we know that board members, just like our teachers and our staff and our administrators, always need to be working to get better at their jobs, and they as well have a standard of professional development. So tonight, we have an award for Marta Schroeder, and Marta is being recognized as having received Master Board Member Certification. This is certified Marta Schroeder of Joplin Schools, has satisfied factor completion of the 42 certified board member credits and other professional development requirements. Melissa Randall, MSBA Executive Director. Congratulations to you, Marta.
And board members, you have gifts and some different things from the different schools and Royal Heights, East Middle School, Joplin High, several other of our schools also have sent treats or good things for you. So we appreciate your service on behalf of the administration and all the staff members in the district. Thank you very much for what you do for us to help guide our ship in the direction we need to, to help our students. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I have to say, I saw this large piece of thanks, and this is from a building that I'm associated with as a board member, McKinley. So shout out to my friends at McKinley for their very large presentation to me. So I appreciate them as well for everything that's in front of us. I don't know if we have much room to move around tonight, so we're appreciative of that. This evening, we're going to move on to our March 2025 celebrations. Speech and Debate National Qualifiers. Our national qualifiers are Christian Kavanagh, Ty Matheson, Cade Sinclair, and Annie Spearing. NSDA National Speech and Debate Tournament, they'll go to Des Moines, Iowa from June 14th through the 21st this summer, from around the world to compete the largest academic contest in the world. Congratulations to these national qualifiers. We have a 100% approval score for our fleet of 78 buses in last week's Missouri State Highway Patrol inspection. The fleet receives zero advisements and improvement suggestions. This is the 29th year in a row, the Joplin Schools fleet has passed inspections with 90% or more of all buses being approved. The Missouri State Highway Patrol performs the annual bus inspections to ensure buses are safe and mechanically sound. The inspections cover mechanical parts, lighting, safety devices, and more. We're thankful for the expertise, commitment, and teamwork shown by our Transportation Department staff. South Middle School students compete in Regional History Day competition at MSSU. Out of 26 participants, 16 students are advancing to their state competition after earning first, second, and third place in their categories. Their hard work and research on this year's theme of rights and responsibilities in history truly has paid off. These students will compete at state on April 26th at Mizzou with a chance to qualify for Nationals in June. Best of luck, and Eagle Nation is proud of you. Teacher Proud Tuesday, Heidi Hodges teaches special education at Joplin High School and has received nominations from a colleague and a parent for being wonderful inside and out of the classroom. Her colleague said, "I have the terrific privilege of working in the same hall as Mrs. Hodges. She is an amazing asset to the Special Education Department with her experience and ability to work and understand people and their behavior. She is always willing to help fellow teachers as well as steer and guide her students toward independence. She has a wealth of knowledge in her field, and her students adore her. Thank you, Heidi, for being an important part of Eagle Nation. Your skills, professionalism, and care are evident every day." Teacher of the Year finalists. Congratulations to the 2024-2025 Teacher of the Year finalists. These teachers were nominated by our community, earned their building's Teacher of the Year Award, and will now go on to be interviewed by a panel of judges to determine which one will represent our district as the Joplin Schools Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to our finalists. National Merit Scholarship finalists. Sam Bowen and Christian Kavanagh have been named a National Merit Scholarship finalists and are now among those students considered eligible for National Merit Scholarships later this spring. Congratulations to these two, and good luck in the next round. Prime Center Awardees for beating the odds on math growth scores in 2022-2023. The Beating the Odds Report highlights schools across the state who have improved their student growth math scores in English Language Arts and Mathematics while serving high school concentrations of low-income students. We are proud of these students and staff for their efforts and determination. Moving from one math proficiency area to the next takes great effort. Congratulations to Cecil Floyd Elementary, East Middle School, Irving Elementary, Cecil Floyd Elementary, again Jefferson Elementary and Jefferson Elementary. Jefferson Elementary in Mathematics, English Language Arts, Cecil Floyd in Mathematics, Cecil Floyd in English Language Arts, and East Middle School in English Language Arts and Irving in Mathematics. The Tootsie Roll Drive. Each year, the Don Roderick Council 7307 Knights of Columbus hosts a Tootsie Roll Drive for donations that are shared with area organizations. Again, this year, the Knights of Columbus chose to share their donations with the CBSS Beacon Autism and Beacon Behavioral Programs at Dunaway Education Center, a gift that makes an ongoing tangible difference for our students and our staff. We are thankful for these community partners and their giving hearts. Joplin High School Missouri Scholars 100 seniors, Parker Hinman and Christian Kavanagh, earned a place in the Missouri Scholars 100. This honor recognizes the state's highest achieving students for their dedication, leadership, and academic excellence. Their hard work and perseverance has set them apart, and we couldn't be prouder. They'll be recognized as a special lunch in Columbia, Missouri later this spring. Congratulations to Parker and Christian. Jet HD's 25th Anniversary. This year, Jet HD celebrated a quarter of a century in Joplin High School and Franklin Technology Center. The new Wall of Fame was revealed, which spotlight, spotlights alumni have gone on from the program to do awesome things in the audio and video world. Many of them came back to see their picture on the wall. If you look closely, you'll see familiar faces that are on our local news stations and beyond. We hope that this wall inspires our current students that they too can go on and do outstanding things. Throughout the month of March, we have had a lot of great things to celebrate all throughout the district, whether it be in the classroom, competitions, demonstrating acts of generosity and kindness throughout the community. Eagles make us proud. We look forward to seeing what our awesome Eagles will do in April. Congratulations to all that we celebrated this evening. Student Advisor Report, Ms. Randstall.
I have a presentation prepared. Expressions of Impressionism. Select students from Painting II and Drawing II classes were trying to display their artwork in the history section of the Joplin Public Library until March 28th. This was part of the Expressions and Impressionism Art Show. Thank you so much to the Joplin Public Library for giving our students such an exciting opportunity. Science Research Team. On Tuesday, March 25th, six students from the Joplin High School Science Research Team took part in two different competitions at MSSU. Four of the six students advanced to the state MJAS competition. 10 out of the 14 different awards were given to JHS students. Five students placed first in their category. Christian Kavanagh placed second overall winner and ISEF finalist, and Hannah Sargent placed first overall grand prize winner and ISEF finalist. These two will compete in May at the International Science and Engineering Fair in Columbus, Ohio. Congratulations to all competitors and good luck on all competitions in the future. DECA State. Forty DECA members competed at the DECA State. Of those 40, 22 medaled, and nine are moving on to Nationals. Only three other schools in the state received more recognition. Christian Kavanagh placed in Principles of Finance. Leif Garrity placed fifth in Financial Consulting. Elle Bull and Abigail McCleary placed fourth in Buying and Merchandising Operations. Louisa Churchin, fifth place, Principles of Business Administration. Duncan Fogarty and Kate Tyson, third place, Business Law and Ethics. Angel Gonzalez and Lucy Merriman, Gold Status for Student Store. Lucy Arisman and Libby Munn, fifth place, Sales Project. And David Bend and John Jasper, sixth place, Financial Consulting.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Data Report, Dr. Seketa.
Okay, before we start with our data report, we have a couple guests here supporting Jasper County for Kids, and Dr. Patterson, do you want to introduce them, please?
Yeah, come on up. We're pleased to have both of these ladies here tonight to explain a little bit about what Jasper County for Kids is.
My name's Terry Walker. I am a retired administrator at Mercy Hospital, and I am a volunteer for Jasper County for Kids. We are here representing Jasper County for Kids tonight because it's a coalition of more than 30 organizations, public, non-for-profits, individual citizens like myself, who would like to establish and are asking the citizens of Jasper County to establish a Children's Services Fund on April 8th on the ballot. The Missouri, state of Missouri, has three different statutes that enable the Children's Services Funds. One of them has been around for almost 30 years. We haven't taken advantage of those, and I would tell you that the professionals at this, in this coalition, think it's a good time to do that now, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. It enables funds, it supports funds that support the mental health, general well-being, and safety of our children. And it provides a wide range of services, from prevention services to intervention services to some treatment services. And most of those are done in community or in home. They're not really hospital-based or patient-based. They're really community and home-based for the most part. And I'm going to pass it off to Stephanie, who's going to talk about why do we want to do this now?
So I'm Stephanie Tease, and I'm the Director of Children's Haven. I have spent my 30-year career working with kids, vulnerable kids and children at Children's Haven and Children's Center, and we're just seeing, and I know the schools are as well, but just seeing the needs of our kids are more intense and more frequent, and we're not able to keep up with those. And so Kids Count is data that we utilize each year, and it ranks every county in the state of Missouri based on all kinds of well-being indicators for kids. That's the number of kids living in poverty, the number of kids with food insecurity in the home, to births to teens, all kinds of well-being indicators for our kids. And in 2024, Jasper County ranked the 98th worst out of 114 counties. 98 out of 114. And in 2020, we were 83. So we're not moving in the right direction, and we're going to have to do something. And the nonprofits and public agencies involved in this really think that now is the time we're going to have to find local support to be able to provide local services to our local kids. So on April 8th, when you go to the ballot, you'll see Jasper County Proposition A. So it's the first item on the ballot, and we are asking the citizens to approve a quarter cent sales tax. That's a penny every $4, which I think is a bargain for supporting our children's health and well-being. Once a Children's Services Fund is approved, then the county commission immediately sets aside a specific fund to receive that tax revenue from the state. And then it appoints a nine-person board to manage the money, to manage the process, to manage the funds, and distribute those as they can most efficiently invest service the certificates of our county. I'm going to stop there, in case you have questions.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Any questions?
I have a couple.
Do you have, of the 114 counties that were on your chart, which were the ones ranked that are doing this already? Is it the 11 counties doing this already?
There are 11 counties who are already doing this. Some of them have been doing this for 20 years. This will not be fast, but those counties that put in the effort and the time to be able to establish a Children's Services Fund, they did that because they were also among the worst when they started, and we have seen real change with them and have spoken with them and are learning from them what has worked for them and what hasn't. So we're not reinventing the wheel.
Are any of those counties around here?
No. Boone County, there are Platte County, Boone County, there are Franklin, a lot, but we don't have anybody. I know that, I know Springfield has talked about it, but just hasn't spent the time to do it. It's a huge investment of time.
Is there a sunset on this? Or is it just forever until it's, we're going to have to wait? The reason is asked is if it's not successful, which point you've led out of once it has been voted, but not, we have to vote again?
Yes, and I would say that there are term limits on those board members who are appointed by the commissioners, and so there will be continual change there. I think it's a three-year.
Three years.
Three-year term that somebody serves, and so having people, just a really committed board who want to see that change will be impaired.
And people on that board can't receive funds?
Correct.
So the Joplin Schools would be on board, we can't receive funds?
Correct. Yes.
County Commissioner can't be on the board. Anyone who has a financial interest in the organization receiving the money cannot serve on the board.
And so you probably use it for our students that are in Jasper County, not the ones that are associated with it?
Correct, correct. Yes. Yes.
Although it could be used for more student benefits, not middle school students that live in Jasper County. It's going to reside not within the school, right?
That's, that is correct. That would be a process they'd have to work on.
We're appreciative that you were here this evening and sharing more information about the Children's Services Fund and what that will do to impact accounting and to share your message with the board, because we all, as we all know, that we're all working on the same issues. We're appreciative of that, your efforts.
Thank you.
And go vote.
All right. Thank you all. All right. Dr. Moongi has a strategic focus point for At-Risk Program.
Yes, Shelley Tartar is here joining us from the Roy Wood campus. Many of these things are familiar, but this is our piece for the month of March to just review and go over how some of our programming is going at Roy Wood.
Well, it's a privilege to be here this evening and talk about three programs that are near and dear to my heart. I'm just going to give a really brief overview of the three programs, and if you want to know more about them, please come and see us at Roy. We would love to have you. So the first program is the Flex Program. So it is a state program. We do follow the guidelines that the state puts together, which means that students graduate with 24 credits instead of 25 credits through Joplin High School. It is for students that are into the sophomore year 16 or 11th or 12th grade. Those students have to be at least a semester behind in their credits in order to be eligible for the program. There are two components to that program, so students have to attend the Roy Wood Campus for two hours a day. During that time, they're working on their core courses through our program called Ingenuity. The second component is that they have to have a job. So they're turning in pay stuff to us, and we don't tell them, you know, we tell them, "We don't want to know what you make. We want to know your hours," because we're keeping track of those hours. For every 60 hours that they work, we can turn that into a half a credit of an elective. So that's really how we can get those students caught up, especially if they haven't passed their electives. They do have to maintain a 95% attendance. That's required. So if they miss a day, they need to, they need to make it up. So between the two hours that they spend with us every day and these work hours, they're considered a full-time students in the state eyes. So that gives us a full-time student for state day purposes, which is great. The next program is our Missouri Options Program. It's targeted at seniors. So at the beginning of every student that's in the Flex Program senior year, we're going to test them for the Missouri Options Program. We're going to test them in the area of math and English first, sorry, lost my train of thought there, seeing if they are at the end of the 10th grade or higher, because we want to make sure that they're going to be able to pass those high set tests. And so if they do pass that test, the math and the English test, then we're going to accept them into the Missouri Options Program. So we'll be working with them on getting them to pass those five high set tests that they need to do to be able to get that requirement met. They do have to come to school two hours a day, and then we also go ahead and say, "Have your job, turn in your hours," because for some reason, if you aren't able to pass the high set test, then we still have those backup plans that you can continue along with Flex, with us as well. And then our next one is JAG, Jobs for America's Graduate. This one, we started almost seven years ago. It is for students that have the potential but are not living up to the potential because of barriers. Those barriers could be in the areas of academics, physical, or psychological, or environmental, or work-related, or just self-barriers that they put up on themselves. So we have 30 students that are in this program. They come to the Roy Wood Campus two times a day. The first group, which is a group of 15, is going to come for three hours. They're working on those JAG requirements, which are those soft skills. So learning about time management, learning about how to get along with people you do not get along with, how to do interview skills, how to write a cover letter, anything that is going to prepare them for their educational career the rest of their high school years, or anything that's going to help them in their workforce, or college, or vocational schooling that they decide to attend. So these students are interviewed that are recommended to us from the principals or the counselors from the high school. We sit down with the parent guardian and the student, and we talk about what are those barriers, and how can we help you overcome those barriers, so that way you are going to be successful. So those are for students ninth through 12th grade. If they graduate from the JAG program, which is our hopes, we hope to get them their freshman year and keep them all four years, then Ms. Parker Spain gets to also touch base with them the year after they leave high school. So it's a monthly check-in with the student, asking them, "How are you doing? Is there anything you need? Can we help you? What is it that we can do to help you be successful?" And then the last page I put up there, these are just some of the services at Roy, and I'm not going to go over them, but I think you guys have access to this, that you can look through them later. But those are our three alternative school programs at Roy.
Any questions for Shelley? You guys, many of you have been there, so you know the amazing work they do and serve so critical population.
Thank you, Ms. Tartar, for your work and your team, and very happy for everything that you do.
Just one question for Shelley.
Yeah.
You said there's 30 in the JAG this year. How many are in the Flex and the other program?
Well, it just depends, because our numbers fluctuate, because whenever a student is done, they might still go out and do work hours. Right now, I think we have about 90. Right now, I think we have about 98 throughout the day that are in the Flex program. Missouri Options Program, we've had four students complete the Missouri Options Program this year.
How many students do you think you've successfully graduated through these programs that would have fallen through the cracks instead?
Oh, that would have fallen through the cracks?
I know it's a guesstimate.
Yeah, that's a guesstimate. I will tell you, over the last four, five years, we have graduated roughly about 133 students through the Roy Wood campus, but that's also virtual included. So take about 88, 80 to 88 students out of that number, and that's probably what we're looking at for the Flex program, Missouri Options and the JAG program.
Thank you for what you do. I hear a lot of good things.
So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tarter.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
Thank you. Very good. Okay, Ms. Toft.
On the Health and Dental Fund, through the month of February, we had spent $5,256,938, which was, we saw that our expenses went up for the month of February up to $690,000. And overall, our health fund is down $766,732 from the same time last year. So, and our dental fund continues, needs to track as we act it. Any questions? Okay, and moving on to the financial statement. If we look at the condensed financial statement, you'll notice that our county funds came in this month. So we, we received pretty much all of our county funds that we'll get for the year. Last year, they did not come in, all of them, until March. So that's a little bit of a difference on this year's. But still, overall, we're tracking pretty, pretty similar to last year. Any questions on our financial statements?
Thank you, Ms. Toft. Public comments, Ms. Horstler. Thank you. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Weaver, a second by Mrs. Sherrick to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Regular agenda. MOU with Pittsburgh's of Technology Scholarships, Dr. Mwangi.
Yes, and I will have Ms. Thornton come up and share with you some very exciting news with a new partnership with Pittsburgh State.
So I will make this quick. So we have a great opportunity with Pitt State for any of our students that, any of our Franklin Tech students that are Joplin High School students as well, since we serve other districts. Pitt State is willing to offer 10 full-ride scholarships for our students starting next school year. So any student that's completed one of our Franklin Tech programs has the opportunity to apply for one of these full-ride scholarships. The scholarship would be renewable for four years. And they would also assign a dedicated academic advisor, career counselor to assist that student, as well as give them the opportunity to have, they have some really cool housing opportunities where if you're in the College of Technology, like in Auto Tech, you may be in this section of their housing area so that you can kind of build that rapport in that community with your college classmates. So it's a really good opportunity for us and I hope that we can, we're able to move forward with this. Do you guys have any questions?
I have just a few comments. One of the things that I've, I've looked at some statistics, that about 40% of high school students go to college, which means 60% go to technical school or into the workforce. And so we've looked at ways to expand Franklin Tech. And Ms. Thornton's done a wonderful job with that. And also forming a partnership, Pittsburgh State, the Crossland Center for Technology is the closest tech center. I think Springfield has Ozark Tech. And so this will be a good opportunity. 10 students, a full-ride scholarship. And we hope this will be great for those students. And Franklin Technology is really excited about this. Thankful to Dr. Carl Stumo at Pittsburgh State University that kind of took the lead on making this possible and all the administration and faculty at Pittsburgh State that are helping with this.
I think it's a great opportunity for our students. Full ride, I mean, that's incredible.
Absolutely. So thank you to Pittsburgh State for their commitment to Joplin Schools. I entertain a motion on this item, please.
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Greenlee to approve the MOU with Pittsburgh State University College of Technology Scholarships. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Accounts payable, Ms. Toft.
Okay, our bill list tonight is $8,398,424.12, compared to a year ago of $3,370.17. And the major difference is a monthly payroll and all of the corresponding liabilities.
I entertain a motion on accounts payable, please.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Schroeder, a second by Mr. Greenlee to approve our accounts payables presented. Any further discussion on this item? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Budget adjustments, Ms. Toft.
I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Dickey tonight as she's transitioning into the finance. I just thought it would be good for her to share all the adjustments.
All right, so I will do my best to present the second budget adjustment of the year. We're into the spring. Typically, Joplin Schools looks at two budget adjustments, one in the fall, one in spring, and then the third and final as we look at the end of the year in June. We're almost nine months into the fiscal year, and so we've got a lot of good information about how taxes are coming in and how some of the state funding is going to shake out by the end of the year, as well as some grant information. As you know, the budget is a fluid living document, and so it was originally built for you using our best information. But it's our duty to inform you and adjust as the year goes on. So we have $1,050,793 in expenditure adjustments. Those are itemized for you throughout the documentation, just some of the overviews. There's a substantial decrease in our career ladder expectation. We had budgeted that very conservatively since it was the first year going back into it. We weren't sure what the participation might look like. Now that we're over halfway through the year, we have a much better picture of how many staff are actually participating in that program. And so it looks like a substantial decrease to those expenses with an appropriate offset in that revenue reimbursement. You'll see a large overall capital projects adjustment that we can talk about and that's itemized in there for you. And some of that is due to our exciting furniture purchases as we move into elementary Phase 1. For revenue adjustments, we have budgeted for this adjustment period $2,263,251. Part of that is with some grant revenue that, that we acquired throughout the school year. That Missouri cybersecurity grant is going to look familiar to you from last year. That was something that Eric has kind of pushed over through to this year, and so it needed to be reflected in this school year's budget. We also, at the beginning of the year, we're really anticipating some steep cuts to the federal interest rate as we went through the fall. The fall months, we saw that federal interest rate drop 100 basis points, and it was supposed to continue through 2025. But then unexpectedly, it's, it has been frozen in the spring. And so that is looking great as far as our investments. And so we were able to adjust some of our earnings from temporary deposits where we're investing some of our current revenue holdings. So that is, we're showing that adjustment and then just some other anticipated adjustments with our high need fund, bringing in more revenue than we anticipated and a little bit of other miscellaneous local revenue. If you scroll to that, the revised revenue and expenditure summary, it's the, it's the first colorful page. Eric? There you go. Just to draw your attention here, when you originally were presented the budget, we were not quite as optimistic as what the state and federal local revenue picture was going to look like this year. And so there was a conservative budget of money into Fund 1 versus Fund 4. And so as things continue to look optimistic, we are shifting some funds that are allowed to be deposited into Fund 4 over that direction. And so we are intending to, this budget adjustment includes moving the Classroom Trust Fund to Fund 4. And so that's a little over $2.5 million that the district is going to move into Fund 4 for this school year that was not originally planned, as well as planning on a full Fund 4 transfer at the end of this school year. And so that, we went ahead and reflected that in the bottom line. And then a new line that, for you guys on this summary, is that, second to last line, that committed fund balance for Fund 4. We've, are showing that the district so far has committed a little over $13 million of our Fund 4 reserves. And so that is for elementary Phase 1, the furniture purchases, as well as the 25, 26 cap outlay budget that you all have already approved. So overall, we're looking at a bottom line net revenue increase of $1,212,458. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Couple of them just started on this page this year, the last one. So the two and a half million shift from one fund to the other, what was that for again?
The Classroom Trust Fund. Originally, at the beginning of the year, we had budgeted for that to go into Fund 1. But you, there are allowances for it to be a Fund 4 revenue item. And since revenues are looking better than we had anticipated in July, we've budgeted them to go into Fund 4 for those continued capital improvements.
Okay, in the event that the rest of the year does not continue on as rosy as you think, then what?
We could move it back. We, until June 30th, we have that option to move back.
So I was just a little surprised that you moved it now though. The urgency of moving it now.
Actually, it, we didn't have to move it. We, we can actually, I don't even actually know if the transaction has posted to move it now. It's just, we were presenting that to you tonight to show that movement.
Okay, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just asking what urgency was to move it.
I don't know that it's an urgency. It's looking at just how revenues are coming in ahead of where we were expecting and then knowing that that flexibility is there to just kind of model what are the opportunities to have for Fund 4 balances at the end of the year.
That's something that we have done since COVID has hit. We've, we've placed that money there as it's came in, in the past four years.
Okay, back to the first page, the career ladders one, that shortfall. I'm really surprised by that. Can anybody comment or explain why our, our staff didn't embrace that? Because I, I thought that was like a slam dunk win-win.
Yeah, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, ladies, but that was budgeted based on 100% of participation when we went into that for this fiscal year. Once they submitted their plans, 100% of eligible teachers did not choose to participate. We still have quite a few who are participating, but we budgeted as if everybody was going to participate.
It was eligible.
That was eligible.
Yeah, we have 270 that have enrolled.
Oh, the committee?
270 out of us.
Five? 500?
Five.
Okay, did we go back to the ones that didn't? Didn't we just say how come, who, for why? Because again, it seemed like, I know why we budgeted that because we thought, who would not take advantage of that?
Yeah, we have a meeting this Friday. Actually, the committee has a meeting, and so I can entertain that question with them. Those who are not participating, why might you think that? We did allow Eagle Advantage as an option. So even if they're not accessing Career Ladder, which is a higher rate of pay, there are more commitments to that. But we might have many of those who are also accessing Eagle Advantage. You just can't do both. So it's a lower rate of pay for Eagle Advantage.
I'd be curious as to what they have to say on that. Because I, I thought we were really doing the right thing here as a district. So again, I'm just surprised that the participation rate is this low.
Yeah, we, we definitely can go back and ask that question again.
Okay. Very good. And just match just the one on the, on the furniture. I thought that was, that million dollars, that we had that in this year's capital budget, did we not?
That furniture, that large furniture purchase was not part of the original cap outlay for 24, 25.
Not the budget, but the budget.
Right, the budget for cap outlay.
It was there, just, we didn't plan on it when we voted on it last year.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Question, Dr. Dickey. And I think it speaks to what Mr. Hurd said. The total capital projects fund on the budget adjustment sheet is $31,875,761. On the other page, it's $28 million for the financial statements. It's the beginning fund balance. Can you speak to the, the difference there? And I know we have uncommitted capital projects fund after what we've spent so far.
Are you talking about on the, this year's, on the financial statements that Ms. Toft just presented separately?
Yes, the, on the condensed financial statement at the bottom.
Sure. That's because this, the budget adjustment has not been approved for tonight. And so, and that is the beginning.
That's the beginning number. That 28 million is the beginning number.
Yeah.
Is that the same? And tell me, is that in reference to what Mr. Hurd just asked about?
With the Classroom Trust Fund.
Just making sure. Thank you so much. Anything else?
Just my only thought on that is, is I would, I would just hold on making that adjustment. It's not necessary, it's not urgent. There's nothing that's saying, hey, we have to or we should. I would rather, you know, just from a business monetary perspective, I like to let the numbers run as we budgeted. And if we get later in the year, we should make an adjustment, okay, we can do that. But it's, I would just like letting it play out because you don't know what you don't know.
Sure. Very true.
Thank you. Anything else? I entertain a motion to approve the budget adjustments as presented.
I would, I would like to make an amendment on that before we vote.
Go ahead.
The amendment I would make is just, don't do that, that other $2 million one now.
Classroom Trust Fund.
Yeah, what was the exact amount so I get it right?
Where am I finding where I wrote it down? So sorry.
So what I meant would be is to approve outside of that, don't make that adjustment at this point in time.
Do you have a second to that?
I can second it.
We have a motion to approve the budget adjustment less the Classroom Trust Fund transfer. Is that correct, Mr. Hurd?
Yep.
Discussion on this item? Dr. Sketit, do you, are you comfortable with that, not making that transfer now?
It's fine because we can transfer later. As we discussed, it could be in the last budget adjustment.
Thank you. Any further questions on the budget adjustment? Hearing none, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Mastery Connect, Dr. Mwangi.
Yes, and with our change of meeting, we had some conflict with presenting. So Chris Young has made a video. I'm not going to show that tonight. I'll just give you a brief highlight, and we'll send that to you. You can watch that if you would like. Mastery Connect is essentially an add-on for Canvas for us. Specific to the 612 realm, part of the thing that we're having trouble with when we get into their Common Assessment work is pulling that data quickly. Right now, we're having to go into individual courses to get that data for teams to come together to collaborate about that. Essentially, this tool puts it all together for us, including a dashboard. We've had some conversations, we've shown principals, we've shown our grade level and department leads. They're all very excited to have some centralized places where that data is. It's where we're not doing as much putting together of data information, and it's there with, for us to collaborate on, specifically digging into now what are we going to do about it? You'll hear a lot about that as we head into next year. So I would recommend approval of Mastery Connect as a Canvas add-on. Implementation starting this spring for, full rollout for teachers next school year.
So it's a $26,000 recurring expense, and it's going to help us access the data faster for teachers to be more agile with how they're adjusting their plans.
Yes, and this is all part, it's really helping us with the assessment platform. So it will come out of that assessment budget as we dropped. NWEA, that covered lots of different things. This helps us keep everything true to the standards for some efficiencies of accessing that data and having more quicker collaborative conversations than data input, that data and having more quicker collaborative conversations than data input, which is what they're doing right now.
Can I point out something? It's, this stuck out to me in your proposal, these four questions. There are a lot of people who say that they are tired of people teaching to a test, but I think these four questions really show that we, what we do is we use the test as a marker to see if students are learning. And the four questions are, what do we want all students to know and be able to do? How will we know if they learn it? How will we respond when some students do not learn? And how will we extend the learning for students who are already proficient? And if this is what our teachers are using in addition to the test data, I think this shows that we are not strictly teaching to a test. This is the goal.
So those four questions, that is what makes up what we call PLC, professional learning communities. Specific to question three, we call a lot of that the response to intervention. So where we're at as a district, just to give you a quick academic snapshot, we have gotten really clear the last few years on question one and two. What do we want students to know and be able to do? We've worked on units, we've worked on pacing. How will we know if they're learning it? That's that common assessment piece within units. Where we are really going to start digging in next year is, now what are we going to do about it? Because we have students who are assessed on standards, who may not be mastering it, and we can't just let it sit. We have to constantly go back in that inquiry, that cycle of learning, and this will be a way to help our 612 teachers do that much quicker.
Not to get off the subject of approving this, but I think this really shows what our teachers are doing to help our students learn and how broad it is.
Yes, yeah. There's a lot of different content, different standards within there.
I will move for approval.
So one other question, there is that...
We have a, real quick, we have a motion, we have a second to that motion on the floor.
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Sherrick, a second by Ms. Schroeder for the approval of Mastery Connect. Ms. Hurd?
Just a question, did you talk to anyone that's already using this to kind of...
Yes.
How they had success?
Yes, and Chris has also partnered with another local district, even seen some things in action. We anticipate some hiccups, anything technology-wise, we know there's going to be some hiccups, but that's why the approval is here for tonight. That will give him this spring and this summer to really use the professional consulting with the company to make sure everything is seamless as we move forward.
Is there anybody around here that's used it?
In our media area, the one closest that we're working with is Sedalia, within our local districts nearby, not that I'm aware of.
We moved in second to approve Mastery Connect. Any further questions on this item? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. E-rate network equipment.
Yes, I'll have our network administrator, Hunter Good, come up to the table to help kind of explain the technicalities, but we are, we participate in the E-rate program, which is a federally funded program that provides infrastructure for municipalities, and we were allotted $890,000 in that program, of which 80% of that is reimbursed through what we purchased. So we are seeking to upgrade our current network infrastructure at Joplin High School, East Middle School, Soaring Heights, Irving, and Dover. We need to replace some switches and access Wi-Fi points with these locations, and what this will do is help with the control of those systems and put some of it into the cloud, which will help with the efficiency and will also allow us to offload some other programs that we have. But, but Hunter, and you brought our news assistant.
So basically, the federal E-rate program, and we're talking CAT II here, allows us over a five-year period, and we're at the end of it at $167 per kid, which for us equates to about 1.3 million. We have about 890,000 of that left to spend on the tail end of that, and we're looking to just purchase some switches and access points off of that. And we are looking at Ruckus that switches and access points, and I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Why is Dover on the list? Because didn't we just build this, didn't we just put new equipment in that building?
The buildings on the list are put there specifically because the access points in those buildings were on the hardware controller for our Aruba. Because of that, we can just, it was pretty easy to just say, all right, these ones are already there. And because we are moving to the cloud as the Wi-Fi controller, we can just offload that from the on-prem controller and move it to the Ruckus cloud.
So during this project, you're moving away from Aruba?
Well, we're actually, while they are moving away from Aruba, but our wireless controllers are AT&amp;T. And so if we go this way too, in a year or two, we'll have to replace the physical wireless controller. Everything will, they'll be in the cloud already, so we're trying to plan and look ahead. That's, that's why we chose those specific buildings, because there's only buildings on the Wi-Fi controller. Everybody else is kind of standalone. One of the access points is a master access point, controls the rest of the building. And so they're not on the Wi-Fi controller, you're moving that up.
And if we lose internet access to, well, because we're losing internet access, Wi-Fi access points are useless anyway, so, never mind.
If we lose access to the cloud, just to that control, everything in the access point stays as it, we just can't make changes. That's all that really is, is when the cloud is the control, the control panel, that you can see on the Wi-Fi.
Okay. So I can go ahead. Yeah, as Eric was saying, the data plane and the control plane have been split, so if we lose internet access, then we still, the data will still flow, but we might lose control of the access points themselves.
Are we installing these new access points, or is a vendor coming in?
They're installed by the value-added reseller at DIRA, and I will be working closely with them during that install.
Part of our, our fee was for them to rip it in place.
Okay.
So they're going to help me design our network to make sure that the access points are not like overtopping each other, they're already at the correct density in all those buildings.
Okay. Well, hopefully they won't have much to do with Dover, because we just did it, so.
And then the newer access points, like at Dover, the switches, we're going to look to move down to the other building once it's all done. So everything will be on newer equipment. It's just, the reason why we said that, those buildings were selected because they're on the Wi-Fi controller, those will be ready to make that.
Are we going to move away from ClearPass?
Yes, that's part of it. So ClearPass is the MAC for Aruba. So Ruckus One, which is the cloud management software for Ruckus, and will be essentially our Wi-Fi controller, also doubles as a MAC. We will need during the transition to keep ClearPass, and that was one of the consent items, is to keep ClearPass in the transition. But as we install more and more Ruckus hardware as we go on, we can just completely sunset Aruba ClearPass and use that entirely as our network access control.
How long until you think that will be?
Right now, we would have, the main concern is the high school and the middle school. So off of this project, we are doing the high school and East Middle School, and then during the next cycle, I believe we're talking...
That summer, we're open to do middle school. We have to do middle school. Take that one off.
Okay.
I move for approval.
Second.
We moved in second in my, Mrs. Sherrick and Mr. Greenly to approve the E-rate network equipment for the discussion on this item.
Just one other question, is that, how do you know how many access points you need if you haven't done the map to say this is where I need them and how many?
You can guesstimate.
I know you can guess, but...
I mean...
Yeah.
So essentially, we're deciding if one-to-one based off of what we have in our controller currently. So right now, we have about 530 in the controller, or 560 in the controller, and about 530 of which are in the buildings outside of those, and it's kind of building by building. But based off of those, we can pretty much say that it's going to be one-to-one replacements.
The only reason I ask is that I run into this issue where I put in a full new backbone, and the new equipment was better, great, so I needed fewer, but all the outlets were in the wrong spot. So I needed fewer, then I had to run wires for the power for them, for the access points. But if you guys don't think you're going to have that issue, okay.
I don't think we will, just because, right now, we have access point for classroom, basically. And so what we'll do is, we'll kind of locate the same layout, but run this off and see if we need to turn the power down. So it'll be more just in that classroom, and doesn't have to bleed out into like the hallway or into the other classrooms.
There's that, and E-Late's kind of wonky, where you have to tell them what you want here, and then you take, there's a time period for how long it gets approved, and then, so you do your best guess here, and there's a long time between actually getting approved and you get the numbers. If we end up with 10 extra wireless access points, it costs us 20% of what they actually cost, and so we'll have stock to use elsewhere.
Yeah, I'm not sorry about that, as I am about the power piece, because, and again, before we're coming, I'll stop. This is more your world now.
Oh, yeah.
But when I had the issue, the issue became that all the various points were basically stomping over each other, canceling out, so nothing would work.
Right.
And that's why I had to then move it, put in different power, which the cost of running the power and the electric was really expensive, it wasn't the access point issue.
The great thing about this setup is that the infrastructure that was installed, the initial construction of the building, that we either reuse a lot of it, or it's trivial to add another switch or a power unit for it.
We don't really see, we have enough building power and everything, and so if we have to turn down the power on the access points, or turn one off, we'll probably still just leave it there and if something fails, it will probably turn back on.
Okay. If you guys aren't worried about it, I won't worry about it. Sounds like you're not, Eric, you're not. You guys aren't worried about that? Okay.
I did pretty good. Took you twice, so I kept going. Tell me that again.
Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Chromebook refresh, Dr. Harding.
Yes, you know, being a one-to-one school district, six through 12, we're going to have to buy Chromebooks. And from experience, we've noticed that Chromebooks have been the best decision for our students. And with the process we have with rolling over Chromebooks from year to year, the students keeping them six through eight, we've seen a little more accountability and less damage. So that's why we're bringing to you Chromebook refresh for sixth and ninth graders for this upcoming school year.
Move for approval.
Second.
This is a motion by Mr. Sherrick, second by Mr. Greenly to approve the sixth and ninth grade Chromebook refresh. Any further questions on this item?
I just have one comment. Why would we give brand new ones to sixth graders when that's their first Chromebook they're going to have? Do we normally do that?
I think it's an ownership issue.
It's an ownership, because they keep, they use, no, they use it every year, but what they found out over the years is if you give it to them, and it's easier to check in and it's yours, and they get used to it. My son's had one for three years, and he knows the ins and outs of it pretty good. So I think there's an ownership piece to it, that they take right in.
I got it.
We need four grades, basically, like fifth through eighth, but fifth grade is not in the same building as the other five grades, so I basically just count it off, six, seven, eight, and I go back to it. That way, every four years, you know that fifth through eighth is...
And we move them down, the ones that are rolling out, we move them down to lower grades.
And just one other comment I would have is, I am a believer that we should go back to books. I know I'm probably the minority on that, but I think that the computer, it's hard for the kids to focus, it's hard for the parents to support. If they're at home, they can't look at the computer, it's ridiculous. And then you say, why aren't the parents involved? But the parents aren't involved, because they can't even follow what's going on on the computer.
I'll tell you, I feel the same way you do, but it's me. My kids are fine with it. I'm the one who wants a pencil and paper and a math textbook to do the math, but they know how to do it.
Their issue is they're distracted by everything and anything.
Yes.
And there was one thing that I recall when I was a student, and not a very good student, I might add, that, me sitting at the kitchen table with my textbook, and that's it, it kind of helped me focus.
Yeah.
So maybe that's a day that's gone by, but I personally think that books is where people learn best, and I even think that in the adult world, that still is the case many times, because that distraction factor. But I don't think that we're probably going to do that, but I would love to see it happen.
I think it's a discussion we should have as well.
Any other comments on the Chromebook refresh?
Oh, sorry, one more comment. These are Chrome, the Chromebooks we talked about that have a five-year warranty, right? That are easier to maintain, last longer?
Well, we only did like a three or four year, four year one. I think it's a, the manufacturer, one year and then three years to cover the four years that people need to replace again. And they are the ones that have the extended ditch, which a car is right over on, and they all have, I'll see these.
Okay.
YP, one of our scrutins, they got the keyboard, which is a very easy one.
All right, great, thanks for making that decision.
Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. I'll light them this evening, district copier purchase, Dr. Harding.
Yes, back in 2017, Dr. Seketa did a, probably Eric, did a huge undertaking of monitoring our copiers throughout the district, and at that time, we kind of went away from a centralized copier location to making copies within the buildings themselves. We have learned a lot over the last seven years. Our copy machines are kind of at their, at the end of their lifecycle, and we put an RFQ to get new copiers throughout our buildings with the lessons we learned. A big piece of that is the ability to audit our machines and address issues with our machines and kind of where they're at as far as use. And so we recommend that board approve Lakeland copy products for, to cover our copier needs for the next seven years.
This is a comment I would make, is I went through this with Matt, I think you did a really good job of doing the RFP and walking through all the dollars and cents on this one, so I commend you for throwing this on it, and I support you on the recommendation on this one.
I move to approve the purchase of copiers as presented.
Second.
Most of my Mr. Greenly saying, like Mr. Hurd, so if we're doing the district copiers as presented, any further discussions on this item? Please vote.
Yes.
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 I make a motion, will you adjourn? Right?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sherrick, second by Mr. Hurd, will you adjourn? Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you so much.
Listen, you hold that. That's what we...